Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasheakan Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason just for all.
Could we have the roll, please? Whoops.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you. The first item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing regarding the public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property owners on Province Terrace. Director Radomski, could you fill us in a little bit on what the project is and where we're moving forward?
So, the project is Province Terrace Trail. It's Province Terrace from roughly Province Link to Midway Road, or not to Midway, to Manitowoc Road. And the properties will be all assessed based on their development agreements that they have. Some of them, the Hulsebacks, have a 10-year leniency period and then five-year deferred policy. Others just have the five-year deferred policy. So, that's how they will all be assessed. We did check over as many development agreements as possible to try and get the best information out there. We did get some information from the Hulsebacks today that stated that one of their properties was assessed incorrectly. We have since corrected that and we do invite Alderman Kruger to make an amendment to that to change the assessed footage for that property. We have not been made aware of any other issues at this time.
Did you want to talk about the type of street, the trail, and the sidewalk as well?
So, there will be a sidewalk on one side of the road on Province Link as well as Midway Crossing. There will also be a trail along Province Terrace. And the Province Terrace will be concrete. Midway Crossing will be asphalt.
At this time, if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak, this would be your opportunity. If you want to step up to the microphone. And if we could get your name and address for the record, too, please.
Thank you. My name is Mike Hulsebeck. My address is 2227 West Hiawatha Drive in Appleton. I'm here with my brother Jerry and his wife Kathy, my sister Joanne and her husband Dave. Joanne and I are co-executors of the estate. And I've got a few items that I would like to discuss with you and make you aware of. I'd like to first thank Josh for working with our lawyer, Steve Crowsey, today and getting that resolved. That was one of the four items that I have. The first assessment was done roughly about 2005. So, it's been about 13 years. In those 13 years, we've sold one-half acre to the daycare. And that was because the city required them to have more parking. So, we were assessed initially about $93,000 for the first assessment. We currently have about $85,000 that we owe yet. In 13 years, we sold a half acre. Now, Monday, I opened my mail and I got the notice for this meeting. I thought that that was an awful short notice. Maybe you guys just decided you were going to do this a week or two ago. Anyhow, I thought that was awful short. In the letter, it explained that they were going to do the second assessment. And now, our second assessment's about $266,000. My dad died 22 years ago. My mom died this past July. We've acquired this 40 acres, what once was 40 acres, from my great aunt, who my dad bought an acre or two from her every year when she needed some money. So, that's how we acquired the land. You could say we're land-rich, but we're money-poor. Our last name is Hulsebeck. It's not Bergstrom. So, if we don't sell any more of this land at some point in time, we're going to have a great hardship when these assessments come due. We're going to have to take second mortgages out or whatever. If we can sell some land, we can put money aside right away to pay these when they come due. If not, we don't have a great history, 13 years, a half acre. So, that's one part. So, after I read the letter Monday and I had time to think about it, there were four issues that I had. Two of them, I believe, are resolved. And as long as everybody here agrees with that, those are off the table and there's no problem. One of them is what Josh talked about. We didn't feel that my mom's corner lot was assessed correctly. He agreed, did a great job, and we're in agreement with that. That's a reduction of about $22,000 on that assessment. The other thing is, like Josh also mentioned, was the 10-year. So, we have a 10-year, no cost, and then there's five years after that. So, as long as there's no issues with any of that with anybody, we're okay with that. The two issues that I would like to discuss right now are, one is the sidewalks. So, there's going to be a sidewalk on the east side. On the west side, there's already an asphalt paved trail. And I understand the city maintains that trail for snow and takes care of it already. I do not believe that there's a lot of people walking on that back road, especially in the winter, that it would be an inconvenience to them if they would just walk across and walk on the plowed trail that you already maintain. I don't understand why you should put the concrete sidewalk in at this time when we don't have any development on any of the land. So, at some point, you put that concrete in, there's going to be concrete trucks, diggers, everything going over that concrete, damaging it, causing problems. To me, it would be more fiscally, it'd make more fiscal sense to not do that now. You'd save some money. You'd save your rest of constituents in Manashe money for putting that concrete in. Put it in later after it's built up a little bit and you have less of a chance of it being damaged. The other thing that is really concerning to me is, what are you going to tell us to do through the winter with plowing that? Are you going to expect that we're going to go out and shovel a quarter of a mile to a half a mile of sidewalk every time it snows an inch or eight inches or 15 inches? How are we going to get something over there? I live on the other side of Appleton. My brother's in Little Shoot. All my sisters are much farther away. That would be a tremendous hardship for us if you're going to expect us to plow that every time, especially when you have a trail that you maintain just across the street all the time. If there's going to be penalties and fines because we don't plow that within a week, there's going to be an issue there. We're not going to do that. So, I would just like to throw that out and have a discussion point on it. The second thing is that also as part of our agreement that was signed in 2005, we have the ability to have a farmer come in and farm that land. And as long as that land is farmed, that land is taxed as agricultural. We have a farmer. We've diligently done that every year. And he's planted corn or taken hay off every year. So, if you put new concrete and nice new curbs and don't have cutouts, which I don't assume you're going to do, that farmer's going to be going over there multiple times all summer long with his tractors and heavy machinery, damaging those curbs. And I just want it to be noted right now so that we can do something about this possibly. We're not going to be responsible for maintaining and repairing curbs that are damaged because of an agreement that we already have with Jeff Brandt and Greg Kyle from 2005. One suggestion, I guess, and the sidewalks are going to be damaged also with that heavy equipment going over that all the time. One suggestion I would like to throw out, to me, it would make sense, would be that if you don't want that farmer going up and down those curbs all summer long, to grandfather the land in and say that as long as we own the land, that we have that land taxed as agricultural. Now, my mother's house, there's two properties with houses on. Those are commercial. We're paying taxes on those in commercial. If you grandfather everything else as agricultural, we'll tell the farmer that the land is not available anymore. Then you don't have a problem with wrecking the curbs and damaging that. Those are the two issues that I would like to have a discussion on. I look forward to hearing any of your comments. Thank you for giving me the chance to talk to you.
So, we'll bring up all of your comments and we'll discuss that when it hits the item in the agenda. But thank you for coming this evening and we'll be to that fairly quickly, I would assume.
Thank you.
Thanks. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? No? It is under...
Resolution.
Resolutions. It's under K. So, yeah. Item E is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. And it looks like the families are the only ones that are here this evening. So, we'll move on to the next. Dan, did you want to move that up or?
Sure. We're going to move that up. That's all right.
So, do we have unanimous consent to move forward to item K, ordinances and resolutions?
We're going to slip through our own meeting.
I see no objections. So, we'll move on to item 1, Resolution 2-19. Did anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman Kruger.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you very much. I would like to make the motion for Resolution R-2-19, the final resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property, Province Trail, introduced by Alderman Repella, recommended by the Board of Public Works.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
I don't know who you got, Debbie. Okay. And is there discussion or did you want to make your amendment first?
Yes, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to make the amendment right away. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Department of Public Works' special assessment report to reflect that parcel number 700001021269 Oneida Street will be assessed on 304.25 of frontage instead of 485 feet, 0.72 feet. This will bring the assessment for the property to $38,387.96 and a total assessment for the Province Terrace assessments to $627,012.66.
There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Sevenick. Did you have?
304.25.
304.25 or 304.28? Director Radomski.
28.
28.
Okay. So...
Steve.
So, the clerk will place the amendment up on the screen for us. And once we get there, I'll ask, is there any discussion on the amendment? I don't see any yet, but I'm going to wait until she puts it up there. There we go. So, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment? Oh. I don't know if that's going to work. Is it?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Okay. Now, we have the motion as amended on the floor, which changes the assessment, as he spoke about, to the short side on the corner lot. Alderman Sevenick.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address some of the issues that you had raised. Number one, if these properties were in the communities that you live in currently, you wouldn't have the option of 10 years. You also wouldn't have the option of a five-year deferment. And I think that you should be very happy that the City of Manashe offers a program like this to help people like yourself so when you get into situations like this, this benefits you. I just want you to be aware of that, that we are one of the few and only communities that does that. And when marketing your property, that is something that should be brought to their attention also. So, as far as the sidewalk issues, I've heard that argument for years. If a contractor does come in, it is their responsibility to replace that sidewalk and they usually don't have any issues doing that when they're doing the development. I understand it's a hardship to shovel, but everybody else who has a sidewalk in this community has to shovel. And also, we have, well, I know you're thinking about those trails, but a trail is a different thing. And if we start saying, "Well, we'll take care of it for you," then we need to do that for every industry around here, every homeowner. It's not an appropriate or fair policy. And if you are in your communities, it is a requirement right off the bat that the sidewalks get installed. We're one of the most lenient communities when it comes to the sidewalk issues. So, that is a, you still have an opportunity to talk with staff and the mayor on that issue and possibly bring it forward. But I have to say that we can't set precedence here in making exceptions. Now, I'm very grateful that, in case you didn't know, all of us Aldermen are very informed about your situation because we did receive emails and also, I believe, your attorney sent us an email on this matter. I don't know if you knew, but the computers were out in this area. There was an accident of some sort and the council members didn't get their emails. So, we only got that information today, but everybody was informed. The city clerk did a great job of making sure that we're all aware of your situation. And I hope that, other than the sidewalk issue, that you're happy and pleased tonight that we did what we did. I know you want to talk, but it's not necessarily allowed. So, thank you.
I did want...
I don't have the chance to talk anymore.
We can get unanimous consent from the council once we're, right before we're finished and ready to vote, if the council so desires. But otherwise, we'll discuss first. I did want to have Director Jacobs talk about two, well, at least one of two things, special assessments. When properties sell, that deferral isn't in place, is the way I understand it. And you would have to pay the assessment for that portion of the property in full at that point?
Correct. At the time of a property exchange, the new owner needs to receive clean title of the property without any liens on it. So, that is correct. Any outstanding charges, if it's, if it were garbage, if it were whatever's on the property there, special assessments included. If there'd been delinquent utilities or something, everything has to be paid in full before a full, clean exchange of the property can exchange between the seller and the buyer. So, yes.
I just wanted to make sure because I had heard of, I kind of thought I heard that these special assessments would transfer to new property owners. So, I wanted to make sure everyone was understanding of that. And then also, the cost of the sidewalks, how is that being paid? I don't know if Josh wants to comment or Director Jacobs.
The cost of the sidewalks is not included with the assessment. It's included with TIF 9. So, there is no cost to the homeowners or property owners for the sidewalks.
Alderman Sevenick, did you want to quick?
I'll yield. Thank you. That was my point, too, is that in other communities, you're automatically assessed. These, Manashe is very generous when it comes to paying for sidewalks and trails and things like that. In your area, that's a very unique situation. That's saving you thousands of dollars right there.
Director Radomski, don't we put sidewalks in at like an 80% mark of the neighborhood that's constructed?
In general, we do try and have the final paving and sidewalks be put in once it's 80 to 90% complete. However, because TIF 9's expenditure period runs out this year, we do need to put any improvements we are putting in this year to be TIF eligible. So, if we delay putting in sidewalks to future years, they would not be under TIF costs. They would be under just general city cost.
Or assessments.
Yep, or assessments.
Yeah. But the first sidewalk, the first street that's on the taxpayers' budget, not on ours.
It was determined for this project that the sidewalks would be similarly to the previous Province Terrace project, that the sidewalks would be not assessed to the property owners. They would be covered by TIF 9.
Part of the project plan was infrastructure on this project. So, streets and sidewalks were part of the original project plan to be paid for by the TIF.
Thank you.
Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Radomski, when is this scheduled to start and scheduled to be completed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting I have to turn yours in.
It's scheduled to start. We're going to go out to bid here. I think bid opens come the 27th of February. So, the start date would be roughly April 1st. And then it's got a mid-July completion date. It was either July 11th or 18th. I can't remember exactly which date off the top of my head.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. The gentleman indicated in his comments that there is an agreement. I'm not sure whether that agreement is with, between the trust and the farmer on the land or if that agreement is included in the information, the memorandum, the agreement from the city that was received back in whatever year that was, 13 years ago. And so, I'm looking for some clarity on that. And also, I think we have a land use versus infrastructure conflict here. And we're considering using tax dollars to construct a sidewalk in an area where the land is currently being farmed. That farm equipment will ruin that investment. And so, I question the, I question that investment until we can get that part sorted out. I'm not sure that it is a wise investment of tax dollars if it will be compromised by the farm equipment. And if that land was grandfathered as agricultural as the person suggested, then we also have what happens to that land if it's not being farmed. We have the potential for noxious weeds or anything like that. It will just become vacant land. So, I feel like there's some things that have to be sorted out here. Are these things that have to be sorted out this evening as part of the resolution or that can be looked into and discussed over the coming weeks?
So, Director Radomski, could you comment on curb cuts? And I'm not sure that farm equipment would be any different than like a semi going into festival, going over some of that stuff if we prepare for it?
Yeah. I do not believe that we would have too big of an issue with farm equipment, you know, driving over the sidewalk. You may have localized areas where it may get damaged, but I doubt you would have significant portions of the sidewalk, particularly if the farmer is informed to use one particular location, you know, over and over. As far as curb cuts, we generally do not put those in until we have a development ready to go. And the reason for that is because we'll put a curb cut in and invariably that developer's going to come in and want that curb cut 30 feet from where it is. And then you're going to be replacing 60 feet of curb instead of just the 30 feet. So, that's part of the reason why we did not include curb cuts in there. I do want to point out that our agreement with the Hulsebacks does state that they will be allowed to use any portion of the property for agricultural purposes. You know, for 2006 and subsequent growing seasons, the city will assess property as agricultural that is actually used for agricultural purposes. So, we do have that in our agreement, that they can use it for agriculture. But I do not believe that it would necessarily have significant damage to the sidewalks with that farm machinery.
Director Jacobs, would you be able to comment on what has to happen for something to be considered agricultural for assessments? I know there are certain, you can't just let it sit fallow and be called agricultural. Are you familiar with those regulations?
Not very much, no. But my thought process with this is from a former community I came from. I know the assessor does have to go through and determines if the use has changed or the lack of agricultural purposes has changed, then it could be considered, in the instances where I came from, it became like a residential or it may possibly, depending on, I don't know, vacant property here, on where this is located, this would be considered commercial also. But the agricultural use needs to be maintained. Otherwise, the assessor could end up, I mean, they would evaluate it year by year. So, it's just like if you, if there's one year that maybe it's not being used and the assessment date goes back to January 1st. So, I guess, at the time of when the assessors would actually be preparing the assessment roll, they would be doing this typically in the spring and the assessment date would go back to January 1. I guess we would, would we not need to know like, you know, by May, June, before the board review would meet to determine if the use has changed?
So, I guess that's something that can be sorted out throughout the year, exactly what needs to be done in order to maintain that agricultural assessment. That probably doesn't need to be decided tonight. Were those the two questions you have or were there others? Did I miss one?
That mostly covers it. I want to clarify, though, we're proposing to put sidewalk and curb, but not allow for any curb cutouts at this time?
We will allow for curb cutouts at driveways or other locations such as those if the council chooses to add curb cuts or, you know, they can give, or the owners give us exact locations where they may want them. We can always bring them, you know, past you guys to figure that out. Generally, we do not put them to unused land or agricultural land solely for the reason that we would end up having to replace more curb later on. It's something that we can consider for this one. However, as of right now, it is full curb throughout the properties that are going to be used for agriculture.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Director Jacobs. In the community, in the community, we have, I've seen families that inherited estates and we have people that don't pay their taxes. And the county makes us whole, correct?
Correct.
The city, we get our tax dollars from it. And in the end, when the property is sold and this county has a lien on it, is there large fines that go with that or is it just when the property's sold, the county gets reimbursed by the property owner? And is there a large fines with that or is there a percentage or anything?
I guess if the question is if there are liens outstanding, if there's unpaid property taxes on it. When, if, I mean, the property would need to be three years delinquent in taxes before the county would do, take any action on that. I haven't heard anything tonight of talking about unpaid property taxes. But if there's outstanding liens on it, like special assessments, that would, when the county would end up selling the property, all the liens, everything would get paid off along with the taxes. And then if there's any amount that still is unpaid, yet they would go back to all the taxing jurisdictions for it. So, like say, for instance, they sold it for $100. And if the assessment is $1,000, the county would go ahead and take the proceeds and pay off the taxes and the special assessments that first and keep that. And then they would end up billing the school district, the county, the, I mean, they'd bill all of the taxing jurisdictions for it. And it's interesting because if this is in a TIF district, that bill might actually come to the city entirely as, since it's in a TIF district boundary, I believe. I don't know that if it were outside a TIF district, that it would not be shared. I don't know. Maybe Attorney Captain could comment on that. I'm not sure exactly. I believe that the city might be entirely responsible because it's, we're responsible for all of the claims that would end up falling under since it's in a TIF district right now. And until we close the TIF district, none of the school district, the county, or technical college would share any... none of the school district, the county, or technical college would share any claims, have to share in that if there were unpaid liens or taxes on that.
Okay, I know sometimes families have hardships, and sometimes there's opportunities that things are deferred, and then, and I know in the past, but with the TIF district.
I mean, what will happen here is that this TIF district will not be in existence going out 15 years, or maybe not even 10 years, so the TIF will end up closing before we get to the end of the 10-year period here, that's in this agreement, so then, whatever happens beyond that, all the other taxing entities will fall in play, because the TIF district will go away.
Thank you.
Don't see anyone else from the council, did you wish to make a comment? Is there unanimous consent to hear from the Hulsebacks? Seeing no objections, if you'd like to speak again?
I'd like to thank you again for your discussion, I'd just like to clarify two points, I, I believe what I heard you say is, if there is any damage to the sidewalks by construction vehicles, well, if we sell a lot, and somebody comes in with construction vehicles to build something, it's not our concern anymore at all, then it's theirs, so if they damage the concrete, you, you can fight with them, I, so, I, I understand that, if our farmer comes in and damages it, what I think I heard you say is, the, well, then I don't know who's responsible for it.
Director Radomski, did you wanna?
I'm just concerned with getting, all of a sudden getting a bill for our concrete repairs for our farmer that per our agreement, we have the right to, to have there.
Actually, I'm gonna defer this to Attorney Captain to see if she knows, if she knows the answer, cuz I'm not entirely sure if we've ever gone back on a property owner to fix the sidewalk, if we can prove that they've damaged it.
Whoever caused the damage, that would be who we would look to first, however, if it is someone that's renting, then the landowner could be ultimately responsible, if whoever caused it, you know, couldn't find the person, or whatever.
And we're not getting any money from this farmer, he's planting crops or in cutting the hay, just for the sake of, to the agreement, okay, so he's not paying us anything for it, he's doing it, we're giving it to him to do, to comply with our agreement with Manashe, that it is agricultural use, and for many years, he planted corn, the last four or five years, he's cut it a couple times for hay, so, depending on some, whatever time somebody comes and looks at it, it might be higher weeds, and the next day, it might be cut down because he bailed it at that time, but I can guarantee you that every year since 2005, the agreement, that has been agricultural farm use, we've complied with the agreement we've had with you. My only concern is, is if there's some damage to curbs or sidewalks, I, I really don't wanna have to have the responsibility for paying for that, that's one thing. My other comment was with the sidewalks, I think I heard, again, like I said, that the damage shouldn't be back to us, but I'm very concerned with the shoveling of the snow, and, and I understand what you said, Mr. Sevanich, it's a big hardship for us, and I would ask every one of you, if you have to drive 10 or 15 miles every time it snows an inch, how happy are you gonna be to do that, and look what it's snowed the last week or two, I mean, we would be running, and then it's not just a little sidewalk in front of your house, we have an extended area, we, you know, across 40 acres, so when it's 10 below zero, are we gonna be, you're gonna see us out there shoveling for two hours, that just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, so that's why my point was, if, if you're gonna be out there maintaining the asphalt, if you're gonna have some vehicle coming down and cleaning that, could you not just go down the other side, or just leave that go, and anybody can just walk across the street, and they can walk down the asphalt that's already snowplowed, it would be a huge inconvenience, and I don't know how we'd do it, and, and honestly, it would be a big battle with us and the city, if, if we're gonna get fined every time we're not over there and shoveling snow, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, Mike, a couple, bunch of different issues, first, my mom did pass away like a couple years ago, and I kept her house for a year and a half, I went over and shoveled every time, and I lived from one end of the city to the next, so I had to go over by Calder Stadium, and shovel, and I live in your district, I'm in the District 8 that this, your situation's happening, I was over there shoveling every time it snowed, and cutting grass every time it did, cuz it can't be more than like eight inches high, so I did do the shoveling and the grass cutting. My neighbor, a friend of mine, his mother just passed away at Christmas, he's been over there shoveling, and if it gets, gets too high, he actually has a service at $40, they come and do his driveway and sidewalk every time it snows, so, I understand your problem, but anybody who's had a second house with some type of situation like that, they've had to take care of that some way somehow. I enjoy, I, I drive down that way to go to festival once a week, and I do know the farmer has been taking care of the land and doing some farming issues there, doing a great job, and it, I'd rather have it farmed than have it just sitting there with weeds. I would hope that maybe we could leave like a 20, 30, 40-foot section, just where the farmer could go in and out, just like a driveway for him, and then he knows enough not to, not to go anywhere else, just right there, so that would be a decent way to solve that. So, those are the two comments, but I do like the farmer working there, I think that's a good idea, I appreciate that very much, that it's being worked and not just a weeded high grassy area and whatnot, so, thank you for having that done.
I'm gonna put you back on the spot, Director Radomski, can we put a, can we put a curb cut in there?
Physically, yes, we can, so that would not be, you know, something that we cannot do, we can put a 20, 30-foot curb cut in there, and if, you know, we, we can work with the property owners to determine the location of one curb cut, and then we-
And then we would put sidewalk there that would be able to withstand traffic over it then as well?
Yes, we could do that, we could put some thicker sidewalk in that location.
Director, Director, now I got it backwards, Alderman Grady, and I'm not sure what, oh, because only two people, only two people at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thanks, okay. Getting back, Mike, to your issue with the sidewalks and shoveling, and the inconvenience, and having to go out there and everything, maybe you can work with Josh or something on this, I don't know if they can, we'll even do this, but since they're already across the street doing the trail, or plowing that out, maybe work on agreement with him, that they'll do that for you at a fee, just, you know, if it's that much of a hardship or whatever. But the other thing too, off, completely off the subject of all of this, is kind of a point of order, I think, with the phones that we talked about, that aren't supposed to be used up here on the council floor, Alderman Taylor, I know you're on your phone a little bit, hopefully it's stuff that pertains to this issue. Okay. Just wanna clarify that, okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Attorney Captain, did you wanna comment quickly on the, on the ability for us to maintain private property?
Yeah, we're not allowed by statute, it's illegal.
So, we wouldn't, unfortunately, we would not be able to do that.
To reach an agreement, oops.
Yep, I turned it off, Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, would a motion be appropriate to add that curb cutout and portion to withstand heavy equipment, or can that just be a direction, a directive to staff?
We do provide curb cuts elsewhere, I don't see-
I, I would rather take that direction than having motions, cuz I, I think that that direction, I think it's been pretty clear that we can take that direction, you know, we'll have, I think, a curb cut on either side, so that the farming practices can continue, as well as some thickened sidewalks, just so that they can do that, so, if we can do that, we'll work with the Hulsebacks to determine the exact locations that they would like.
Thank you very much.
Mike, related to the property, what year was the, the explosion on the property?
That was not our property, that was the acre in between us.
Oh. Okay, alright, I thought it was the same property, thank, okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the motion that's on the floor is the resolution for the final, final assessments, as amended, to use the short side of the one property rather than the long side. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 7-1.
Okay, moving forward, we're gonna move, actually backwards, to item F, the report of department head, staff, and consultants, Director McKinney is ill this evening, so she will not be here to talk about the community health survey, she plans on doing that at the next meeting. Item two is the minutes and communications, do we have a motion? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move that we receive minutes A through E and communications F through K.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Attorney Captain, this, this was an invitation in our packet from the Habitat for Humanity, and there's a reception and dinner, and at no cost, are we allowed to accept something like that, to go to that and have a free dinner?
It's, it's not in the packet, it was actually mailed to each of the Aldermen?
Oh, I thought it was in my packet.
It was actually mailed to the Aldermen, I, I got one as well from Mayor's office. Tom has one of them. Typical, do you wanna talk about the typical acceptance of any? Did you, did you wanna comment?
And I don't know exactly what it is, or who it went to, but-
I'll share with you later.
And, okay, an invitation that is open to the public, then, that would be fine, as long as anyone was able to attend, but if it is something that a person is invited to solely because of the fact that, of your position on the common council, and it is something you'd be getting, you know, to try and influence a vote or something like that, obviously, then that would not be appropriate.
I think we all got one, so, and it's from the Habitat people, I'll show you, I'll share with you later, I thought it was in the packet.
Do you have anything else, James? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I'd like to quickly just discuss communication F, the letter that we received about Broad Street, after reading through it, there was just one, one sentence or small paragraph in there that was, that kinda bothered me, and I just wanted to make sure that the public and everybody understands that the actions that were taken are not punishment on anybody within the community, the reason why the two-way, two-way street was even brought up to begin with, is cuz it will be a two-way street in the end when the bridge is done with the roundabout, and the object was, was to get the community used to the new traffic flow before the big project actually came, which also includes an only right-hand turn, so, it, in fact, probably, if it was able to be voted on again, probably most council members on here were against the bridge to begin with, but that's, we're past that, I just, I just wanna reiterate, there's nothing punishing about this, there was a reason for it, and it was explained when we first started on it, it was strictly to get the community used to the traffic flow that will be coming, so, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda has four items this evening, the minutes to approve from the common council from February 4th, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 4th to recommend to award the MCM contract number 2991800521, it's for the 2019 water main reconstruction in the amount of $868,787.50 to Donald Hipison Sons, and the planning commission recommendations from February 5th for the certified survey map consolidating three lot, two lots, how many, several lots on Lake Park Road, and the certified survey map as proposed dividing 918 Plank Road into four lots, does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Sevanek?
Item two.
Does anyone wish to have any other items separated? Is there a motion for the remaining three items? Alderman Sevanek?
Thank you, Mayor, at this time, I'll move that we approve consent agenda items, one, the common council, item three, the planning commission's recommendations, one is the certified survey map for the 730 Lake Park, or 750 Lake Park, and the 700 Lake Park roads, and the certified survey map for, excuse me, 918 Plank Road.
There's a motion, a second, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item two is the recommendation to award the 2019 water main projects, is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the recommendation to award MMC contract number M0002-9-18-00521, 2019 water main reconstruction for DePere, Frederick Second, Second Street, Walnut, and Willow Streets, Lisbon Avenue, Lake Road, Donald Hipison Sons Incorporated, for the amount of $868,787.50 for the Manashe utilities.
So, motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item I is action items, the first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 6th through 14th, is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 6th through February 14th, 2019, in the amount of $4,804,718.79.
So, motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications, is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period, as listed in the police department's memo dated February 13th, 2019. 2019 licensing period, as listed in the police department's memo dated February 13th, 2019.
Is a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 8-0.
Item three is a motion to reconsider. Alderman Sevigny?
I just want to address the council here for their understanding of a motion to reconsider. We operate under Roberts' Rules of Order. Under Roberts' Rules of Order, a reconsideration would require a second, and would only need a majority, and is debatable, but the city council, under Roberts' Rules of Order, it is, I am an, I am a...
Let, let's stand finish.
Okay.
Let's stand finish.
But the city council enacted their own rules, changing that, okay? So they changed the rules where you do not need a second, it is not debatable, and it requires two-thirds vote. Am I correct, City Attorney?
I don't know if you're correct what Roberts' Rules say, is that what Roberts' Rules say?
Yes.
You're, you're correct in what our rules say. I didn't look up the Roberts' Rules.
I know Roberts' Rules, Roberts' Rules, you need a second, you need a majority, and it is debatable, so. And on the city council's situation, that is not the case. We changed the rules about, I'm guessing, like 15 years ago, and it's something that we are allowed to do, just like we do in protocol, we've set up our own rules. I'm not certain if I agree with it. I think at the time when Attorney Brandt did them, he was trying to give a, the minority a better advantage or something, but it might be something protocol wants to look at, but I wanted the rest of the body to know that, what the current procedures are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to, for a motion to reconsider 0119 and ordinance admitting Title X, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances, motor vehicle and traffic, Broad Street.
And as Alderman Sevigny did state, there's no second required, and there's no discussion, so we would take a roll call vote at this point. It does require a two-thirds majority. Okay, moving forward, the last item on the agenda is public comments, and I don't see any other people in the public, so I would accept a motion to adjourn at this time.
Make motion to adjourn. What would it matter?
Motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.